I'm gonna go ahead and call to board the city council's September meeting Monday. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty five at two P M. We'll see how it's been watching.
It's. It's. To your. If so. Just.
All right, we'll look into roll call, we'll start on there with comfort later.
Alan Wood.
Right now, I'm trying to think what.
Adam Man.
Nikki Harden.
Tom Miller.
All right, all present. Item number four changes to the agenda. All the comment was missed on this agenda, so I'm going to add that as item number. The. I'm just trying to. And then running in is the first thing after the approval of the agenda. All right, so any other changes you made to the agenda? All right, do you have a motion?
Move the move the agenda. Second.
Okay. The council reporter made a motion to approve the agenda, the addition. That's I've written. And councillor Miller seconded. Any discussion? Right, move into a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And approved, we'll move into public comment. Any public comment? All right. Looks like there's not. So we will go ahead and move into. Item number six, old business. Correction and adoption and or correction of resolutions twenty twenty four dash oh seven and twenty twenty four dot fifteen. No, sorry, I'm sorry, can give us a little bit of background to clarify the messy situation. So we're here for twenty twenty four oh sevens. The first one is signed by Mark Kraus and. They help out. And he highlighted the page that has it mapped it. Then the next one is also twenty twenty four oh seven. And that one is the one that is signed by Krista and. And Mark, the figures are right, but she added it wrong at the bottom, police highlight. He found that one. Then. When when they did the supplemental budget, when she thought that there was not, and. They had that hearing in in December. And. Chris Kelly was signing by Alan and Krista, and there was an error, she didn't change this top one here. So the the figures are all right in the body of it, but the very the third line, second line down is in orange, it is wrong. Then. I brought it to your attention, we had, and Nikki signed one, and by Mayor and her sign one. And it is correct, the figures are all correct. All through it, but it's all wrong, but it was the. The approved budget by the budget committee, not the one adopted by council. I had gone in and in January seventeenth. The taking out your products gave us our budget in your book, and you give everybody the five hundred thousand. That's what I kept saying. But I told you five hundred and ten thousand. But the astronauts. Which one is correct? So I'm working from the five ten. You know, budget, so she did this thing for everybody. And all the highlighted parts is what was corrected and changed on. They adopted. So we had proposed by the budget committee for five hundred and adopted by the council for five ten. So I went to the resolution. And the resolution is for the five hundred. So again, except with four resolutions, there's a lot of budgets for the long term, there's errors through it. The fourth one is correct, but it's for the approved. By the budget committee one, not adopted. So the only thing. I didn't do is this resolution here. If the council wants to read it, it's given. Of this by them, because we had to address the four resolutions, so they're not out there hanging. And the past council in June never approved the right budget. So. The figures at the bottom aren't correct. They've been double, triple check. And you'll see the the little piece of paper down here, because I couldn't get them to match what. They did. And so you showed me what it was, it was the math error on Fund Nine for the three thirty six. And the library reserve needs to be added in, so that's how you turn up with in the last page, the seven. Seven hundred forty nine thousand seventy nine dollars.
So those need to be added to this?
No.
Oh.
It's just explaining it, because if you were to run a tape on the budget to this, I couldn't get this figured map. So if I could get it to match, so if anybody was to run it whole. I wanted to know where it was, so that's how that's seven forty nine and whole seven nine.
Well, thank you for keeping track of all that.
You know, and that's why I kept reminding when I kept saying it's too long budget for five hundred on five, you know, I know it was confusing, but.
Yeah, we need to get the numbers straight here.
So. All right, like you said, maybe did all of the figures. And then I took a resolution that heard them and I.
Reviewed.
And.
Uh huh. He reviewed it, he didn't check the numbers, but he said that the process. Because we have to change it, we have to the budget. There were the two budgets that were made, one was the five hundred thousand, and then at the June meeting. The city manager at that time. Said he'd found more money and he made a change, and so that is why there was two budgets. But the one that could the five hundred thousand was sent to the county. And then the five ten has been sent to the state. So we need to correct them with. Them as well, so that they get the corrected. Paperwork for their files.
Once that Chris. The highlighted yellow is where changes were made from the five hundred to the five ten. And it's all through it. Little bit here and there, maybe, so it's not like this is just a general. So, okay. Thank you for the backstory, or. Are you asking to adopt this resolution today, or we often review it and then have it on the next meeting for adoption?
I would recommend review.
Okay.
Um, because it's pretty. Confusing for a for a minute for the conversation.
Resolution. From in the motion that was made during the June thirteenth council meeting, May twenty four, was for the five hundred thousand. So you don't have the motion and resolution for the correct, but. That's why I thought this one here has to be. Approving. The twenty twenty four, twenty five, but. But I don't know what date. That's why I was hoping. That you can figure out on it. Where it says the above resolution statement was approved and declared adopted on in May, but if you have to put the effective date. Or see, that's the only thing I think you know.
Oh, okay, I'm not sure.
Because.
He didn't want to mention.
The problem with all of these resolutions that were done is there they look, they're all adopted on the thirtieth day of December or on June thirteenth. And they should have a date their sign, the date their effect. So you can look at them and tell, like you said, you're looking at them and saying, which one? You know, you don't know. But that's why it is just the only thing I was going to tell.
And I didn't ask.
We come back. And let's see. That's the day, you know, the date of sign. You want to ask stories about that, or would you like some? Okay. Okay. So we'll just follow up with the effectiveness question for the resolution for the regular meeting in June. Okay, I believe it means what everyone was talking about, you think the. Pioneer and she has come. Without the meat of that.
Um. I'll I'll ask that one too, because I don't think I asked that question.
But the next regular meeting, the budget will be presented, you know. Possibly adopted, correct, so it has to be. What's the other item?
Well. We were also wondering about the dates, because we have the June. Well, ninth. City council meeting and budget adoption. But we're thinking you could probably have it later in the month. Hmm. Because the calendar, when we adopted the calendar.
Oh, I thought we were just gonna do it in the middle of the meeting.
Um, I.
Oh.
It's up to you. Um. My, uh. In my, I asked her about, and he said typically you have separate meetings for budget and city council.
Okay. I. Yeah, because I I don't remember telling you something to adopt last year's budget, I think. Yeah. Um.
So it's really up to you, but that's, yeah, that's just what he said, that usually, and he said a lot of times when he would do the budgets that. They, um, it's like at least the third week. Um. Because you find things to, it's not unusual to correct. From the adopted budget from the play or the not the adopted, the approved. To when you do the adoption, when you you do, you can make changes. For the adoption, I mean, when you adopt, because it's not unusual, because you between. May and June, you can get different figures, you can get more money, you could get. Um, different things that you have, and like what happened last year, it, he found. A additional money, and that's why he changed it to the five ten. And, um, budget, and so, or, you know, the. The city manager at that time, so it's not unusual to make changes. Um, before it's adopted.
I agree, and it's important to know that the budget was done on the month eight, six. And then they kind of not know the consequences. It may look better than what it is, so. But a week later, there's a regular. Yeah, so. No, we haven't have the resolution done by. A certain date for the code. Portion.
Oh, yeah, for the code portion, yeah, for the to the, yeah. Um. For the but the fees were completely, yes, separate.
Yeah, I I knew there was a deadline in the middle of June.
Yeah, and then, and then I had to. We have to know what we're doing, because today is the day that I would have to, and I don't even have that ready, the, um. Now that I'm thinking about it, the L B. One that has to go in the newspaper for the budget.
That's right.
Yes.
Well.
Or the twelfth.
I, um. If it's staff's recommendation. Or a person doing budgets recommendation to push it a week later. And or maybe we discuss it at the regular city council meeting, and if you feel like we need more time.
Well, we won't have enough time. It has to be noticed, I have to. Um, and with the way that our newspaper only. Uh, we have to put it, I have to submit to the newspaper a week before. The, um, any publication.
Um. I personally feel like maybe we can discuss it at the next regular meeting. Post it for the meeting.
Okay.
Um, but that's just my opinion. And what you do, so if she does it Mondays, they do it the twenty fourth. If we needed another meeting after that, or.
Um, I would have to look at the calendar, and I don't have.
Well, if she, that's the only thing I can do on the, we have our meeting on the public issue, send it out on the same. Then we can have it done, because not many bodies can fit, they don't. So when she does it Monday, they don't do it that Tuesday, we do it.
Right, if I were to send something today to them. They would post it next Tuesday.
Can you preempt, we send out notice in the camp to that meeting?
Oh.
Or if you have posted.
Yeah, if I if I send it to them, I can. I could cancel it, they would take it out of the paper, they just won't, will not put anything in.
They, yeah, you know, maybe they do that. And then if we have that not meeting yet.
So put it, send, submit something today for the twelfth.
Well, okay, yeah, we can submit something today, advise you a little bit more time to submit something for the twelve. You would have to just have it sent in by the twenty second, and that would be two weeks.
The twenty second of May.
Yeah, well, that would be two weeks, if you get it sent in, that would be best. And then. We can send something in on the. The first week of June to have a meeting the next week, if it's necessary, and then we can go ahead and cancel it, if not. That sounds like a plan? Okay. Right, and. Or that meeting in June, the week after our regular meeting, would we want to. What day would work best for everyone?
Is our regular meeting?
The June twelfth. So it'd be the week sixteen through the twentieth.
So we basically want the sixth book to shoot for the six twelve for the budget. Adoption.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just have another meeting scheduled just in case. Or the about. Nineteen. I need to remember doing it. Yeah. Okay, nineteen. I have a case that one, uh. Well, I mean, I just can't figure out whether you have any, or if you don't really know.
It says better than Monday for me.
I think you're right. My question. Monday, about Monday, yeah, June sixteen. And I don't think it. Okay. That means June second would be the two weeks. That's something we need to go out, so. Okay. And I got that taken care of, so let's table this resolution till the next meeting, so everyone can get a chance to review it. And we'll do the follow up question. All right, we'll move on to new business. Item number seven, Lakeside Business Owner requesting city council to approve Lakeside Business Organization application for experience Luke's side. Yeah, councillor him.
Uh. There are two agenda items, seven and eight relating to the L B O. I understand that I am going to step away from the conversation on eight. I'm not a hundred percent sure what is the best factor for seven. Seven is not having to do with finances, this has to do with the. Permit application. And I'm interested in what the mayor thinks about, should I just step away from that, or is there some potential conflict, just in fact, that I've been involved with?
Um, I think when in doubt, step out.
All right.
And I think that's, that's what I'm gonna do as well, I don't, I mean, there's a potential conflict of interest. Um, for the Lakeside Business Owners, so I would rather just not participate in the conversation, but I will. Um. Uh. Hand it over to councillor Miller to kind of run the two items, seven and eight, all right, with this. Like.
Yeah.
So. Or you should probably formally declare. For the minutes.
I'm going to step away from the conversation with item seven and eight for potential conflict.
And, yeah, Nikki Wood will step out of the conversation due to a potential conflict of interest as well for items number seventy.
Okay, so there's a copy of. The application for an event. Our packets. Lakeside Business Owners request. Approval of this application. Everybody had a chance to look at that? Of motion? Everyone's had a chance to look at it?
I'm going to approve Lakeside Business Owner Organization application for experience.
Votes are made by councillor Harden and seconded by councillor Pointer to approve application, any discussion?
Yeah, my question happens that. I put the sign off. So they they have all their insurance, but you know, everything is new.
Yes, um, the county, okay, go.
No, right.
Hmm. Uh, the county has approved the the closure, um, the closure areas. Um, the, we did get the their event insurance naming us additionally insured. Um, and. The only question that I did have was on the. Uh, the. O L C C. Did. You have a question on that?
No.
On her, okay, the O L C C application, we, we, um. The city signed off on that, but we were told that it was only going to be on private property, and is that still the case?
Yes. As far, that's a completely different event, it's a, it's a single event. That that the O L C. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Info. Well, it's been some. Separate.
We're.
Alright, it is.
We're doing a kickoff party on Friday night, we're having a band and. Alcohol truck there, a bus staying for the Saturday as well, since we're having. At close down, and events going on in council. We're having that going on at Saturday, so it's parking as well. So Lakeside Experience by Side Event will be in the street of Eighth Street. The alcohol truck will remain, not parking lot from the previous.
Those, uh, you said.
It was approved, hers was approved for two days, so I had hers approved for the third.
So what's he doing in this community? He just did this, you, I'm sorry.
The O L C C, the O L C C, yeah.
But it's not a separate event. Experience Lakes.
Or does, do you have your own insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we do have our own insurance, so, um, if I'm having this. For this package, I said it was, uh, initially just a Friday night, but we had it. It's going on Friday by itself, and then Saturday it'll be going on. Uh, with.
And maybe you have a copy of your.
I know.
I mean, just because you said on, um, the.
Well, right.
It's a separate intent, now we've got. It's one, and I just want to make sure.
Right, because, but you, yeah, as long as you're part of the, because when we, when we signed off on it, you were a separate event.
It was a Friday, yes.
Yeah. And then that was included in this packet, so it was. Question, but. We have insurance, or does it need to its own event application, what do you guys think?
I would say as long as you have insurance, you can provide it. Just think, yeah. Where the city is covered.
Are we additionally, she'd have to make us additionally insured, are we additionally insured, the city? And, uh. On and her insurance packet.
On the. On the search track.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's what the Experience Lakeside had, they had a conversation with our insurance carrier to make sure that everything was. Okay with with them. But I'm not sure about the, we just have to make sure insurance. Were included as being additionally insured.
She's asking for the name of it.
Okay, so City of Lakeside. Um, um, nine one five, North Lake Road is our address, our mailing address is P O Box L. Like, say, nine seven four, you know, that part, nine seven four four nine. Okay. Okay.
You get everything you needed, Paul? Yes. For that, you need it. Any further discussion? Ball for vote? All in favor?
I.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes?
You please ask for a distinction vote as well.
Oh, an extension vote?
abstain.
Same. Two extensions. Mayor Wood and help. Next item is. The item number eight. Review and the review of a potential approval of resolution. Twenty twenty five dash ten Lakeside Business Owners Event Funding.
If I may before I make the motion. I would, I make the motion last time, last to authorize spending it. But I, and then you did the resolution. Before the motion is made to approve it, I'd like to have to consider putting sixty days in there for. Um. Give them time to file their accounting, because of the timeframe being so close, that I think sixty days would, because. We we.
Between events, you mean?
Yes, well, yes, because if they have to file in a accounting before they get the next set of monies, they need. Time to file accounting, so I think that we can amend this resolution, and the motion was reflected, saying. Within sixty days after the completion, to file their accounting, that way they can still get the money ahead. Does that make sense?
Um, yes, and do you have a, um. What days will they get money, I mean, so if the, uh, the, this was, this was a question from, from the applicant. Um, so. What, we have it signed, the resolution signed, and when would they? Be receiving a check from the city for the, and it's for the first event only, not the entire. Ten thousand or whatever it is, right?
Three, easy. Things, yeah, if they need to.
Well, the, yeah, well, this is the fifth, their event is going to be Father's Day weekend, so that's fifteenth or so of June, correct? And so we're already past that. So, um, the, as soon as it's signed. Is that how it works, you don't have to wait for resolutions to a few days or something for them to go into effect, or isn't it, I don't know any of that?
That's. That's what I was looking for in my book down there, what is the resolution effective, I haven't got any impressions effective, assuming it's signed.
I.
Was it? Resolution immediately, you say, Catherine, yeah. So.
Okay.
So I, you, you, so I can, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution with. Um, correction that I. Um, correction that I, and then we can discuss if you think sixty days giving them time to do a accounting. But then that way they can get the money for July before the accounting under there. And then they have something in, um. I just, I just want to make sure that they're not held up to get the monies for the next event, but you have a time. It should take sixty days to get.
Yeah.
And there are, uh, pastor, counselor.
Sixty days wouldn't really achieve the intent of getting accounting before dispersing additional funds. So to address the concern of timing this. Would it be better to change this so that the expenditure of. Funds for the Lakeside Vintage Festival. Is dependent on having the accounting from previous two events. So if you, if you put sixty days on it, then. Your dispersing funds for the fourth of July, before you have the accounting from Experience Lakeside.
And that was my.
Right, so. The intent of asking for. Receipts which was dispersing digital funds. Or at least be sure that it's been spent appropriately, so. Sixty days doesn't achieve that. But what I'm suggesting is instead of sixty days. Make the, the dispersment for the, I'm not sure, when is the vintage festival?
I think it's in August, like August twenty fourth or something, I saw it on Facebook.
Because they're so close that if we, if we wait for the accounting, then it's not July twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth?
I think that's when the great party is, or maybe the twenty sixth.
Finance report from Experience Lakeside down into. Item number three. Making funds for the vintage festival contingent on having the financial reporting experienced lakeside. The million lights of Lakeside contingent having reported from.
If they don't have the accounting. Then they can't have the money. And that's what I'm saying, if we just say that they have to account him within sixty days, and I know, I'm assuming. That they will have it, but then we'll have all the accountings filed to the million lights. And if they need to buy supplies or something. I, I just, I just think that sixty days is to give them to get their bills in and receive it. But don't hold their money because we can overlap when we have.
So how's that gonna read then, correct it on this resolution?
Let me just say the thirty eight hundred to be given to them now. So that they can plan for their organization, but then the accounting must be filed within sixty days of the event. And then authorize the expenditure of seventeen hundred dollars for the fourth of July. And then accounting to do within sixty days of the event.
Um, so sixty days prior to the event. Not within, right?
A- after, after the event. Prior to receiving funds for the following event. I just don't know how we're gonna work that.
Yep, this is your working copy, and then I'll go find the. I'll go find the, um, agenda, the resolution number. That would be.
We have, we have to, we, we have to pass a. Corrected copy of this, so we just gotta figure out that's, gonna read so we can.
So it's number two where the problems are, where we have to say.
For the fourth of July.
Living citizen arms waving around out there.
I may address as the accounting professional.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Now Lakeside volunteer and. For the L D L. And oftentimes, you don't even get the invoices until a month after the event, often for less and. Um, the fourth parties and other small invoices that business owners might turn in receipts for the day of the event, they needed supplies, so. I, I believe that anything less than sixty days requirement would be, um, not always accurate, because you may not even have the bill to have been paid. So if all of those events are listed the way they are, and the resolution says that any further, you know. All this funding has a requirement of sixty day reporting after the end of each event. All of them.
Yes, yeah, that, that's, that's our goal, we're just trying to figure out how to, how to, the verb, the correct verb, so we don't have to do it four, five more times, thanks, Carolyn.
My. But if anyone somehow ended for sixty days. Or the other. Or let me just put a line there says. Like. How things do it in this stage of.
Or, or divided. One and two, three and four would fall under the sixty days of the day.
And you could, you know, like I said, on the even end of line one, say. Complete budget for this event within sixty days for all event. First people.
It's not, it's not thirty days before the first event.
I know.
Yeah, typically, this, they said that's usually that they are. They, um, come sooner than this, this is a lot later for planning than ordinary.
I don't have a problem with, with funding itself, which is how we're gonna make. Some more clear, clear.
Vending their funds.
So what if we put before number. First. There, now their portrait of all the consumer. The bank, you know, funds will be released three days prior to the event, to each of the events. From the T L two funds and. Which will be filed within sixty days.
Do you wanna do something like the account, accountings? And their review? Because, just because you get them, you still have to review them to make sure that you agree with what. Well, yeah, like you guys, I gave you the copy of their, um, uh, receipts and everything for the million lights, did, I, it has, it'll have to be reviewed, and so.
For review.
Yeah. Yeah, with, yeah.
Yeah, prior to receipt funding for the next. Yeah. And you know, when you've got that all written down.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I hope, I'm abbreviating.
Any other discussion, once you write. That's all.
I have a number two. It's offering the expenditures of two hundred and two funds for July. Either the Lakeside Business Owners Association on receipt from the budgets of this.
Oh.
This, uh. Referring to a finance report for an event with thirty days, what happened to the event within? Changing the. Sixty days for each event. Then under every item where it refers to the finance report for the proceeding. You wouldn't even have that. So I'm not able to, you wanted to remove and finance report from the Experience Lakeside. Twenty point four again. And then, item three. Very last part says. You want to remove and finance report from the fourth of July event. Last one, you probably need to place this way.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have approval with corrections, do they still get the funding like now, or how does it, what do we, does they need the money?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, as soon as it's signed with. So I lost track, do we have a motion? Did we have a motion? We, no, no. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, usually a discussion follows a motion. Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll extend, okay. That's why I made a draft, so you guys just. Make your corrections.
Over one, to make sure you have now where the corrections are.
Hopefully it's recorded.
Just have to be read. Hey, yeah, okay, we'll call for motion then.
Lakeside City Council to authorize expenditure of funds requested by the Lakeside Business Owners Association. In supporting special events to promote the city of Lakeside and business activities from funds derived recently from the state authorized funds. I want to change my motion to remove mayor. A resolution of. The Lakeside City Council. So my motion is, um, rather than to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash in. A resolution of the City of Lakeside Council to authorize expenditure fund requested by the Lakeside Business Owners Association. In supporting special events, well, to be of like site and business activities from finally received through the state authorized. With corrections. On. Where on the top of the second page to say, funds will be released three days prior to the event. And all accounting was received will be submitted for review sixty days after the event.
Okay, motion been made by Councilor Armstrong, seconded by Councilor Pointer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes? Staying with.
I am staying.
I will stay as well, to Councilor or Mayor Wood and Councilor and abstain.
If you're ever gonna do that.
I'm happy to read through this, if that's what we need.
So we had a. Three hour inch meeting. Week or so back where we went through this very. We tried to go through this very, very thoroughly. We created two documents, one is a profile of the position. This is what we considered a summary. Of the position and not to be confused with the full job description, which is the second document that we went through and created. Uh. I will go ahead and start and read through the profile real quick here. City of Lakeside is a hidden gem located in Coos County, Oregon, with a rich history that once was a gateway for many of Hollywood's rich and famous. Lakeside is located on the beautiful, uh, just off Highway one oh one between North Bend and Reesport. Lakeside is located on the banks of Oregon's fourth largest lake, Altima Lake. Oregon's but Lakeside, both proximity and coastal beaches, bays, rivers, sand dunes, and forested recreation areas make it an ideal. Coastal recreation spot, Lakeside is a rural city with a mayor slash council for its government, city council consists of mayor and six councilors. Who are elected from the city at large, city reporter slash commander reports to the mayor and council, E U T, or work closely with the mayor and council in carrying out the duties of the position. Population of Lakeside is approximately eighteen hundred and thirty nine with a current budget of fifteen million, which includes a ten million plus. Dollar. Which includes ten plus million dollars managed by an outside company for the construction of a new wastewater plant scheduled for construction. Sometime in the summer of twenty twenty five, council contracts for a city attorney and city evenier. Compensation. Starting salary for this position is sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year, depending on qualifications and experience, salary exempt position. Compensatory time off. The city participates in first. Benefits include health and life insurance as well as vacation and sick leave and other usual benefits are provided. Out to apply, persons interested in applying should submit a city employment application found on the city of Lakeside website along with a cover letter indicating their entry. A detailed professional resume that identifies relevant qualifications and experience outlined in the position. Profile and a list of five professional references. It's in cover, letter, resume, application, and resume, and references. The City of Lakeside Reporter Manager recruitment committee, P O Box L, Lakeside. The city of Lakeside reporter manager recruitment committee inbox L Lakeside, Oregon, nine seven four four nine. Or email to admin at cityoflakeside.org. This position is. Is open until filled with first review on blank twenty twenty five.
Thought was to get somebody invested. And then sending them to the website to then look at for the job description.
Maybe you can make one little change. Make a generous salary of sixty to eight. I'm serious. I mean, it's like this. No apologies. And it's just.
Or a competitive salary.
Yeah, something that it's. Well, it is because if you think of the, I'm sorry, you're the counselor. But if you think of the fact that it's only one department that you have. Hold you that you had. If you were in another city where you're making more, you're probably in charge of. The the water department, the fire department, the police department, all of these other departments. You're the head of all of that. And we're not. You here, you have.
Let's let's read through the the job description and maybe that'll clarify whether that's generous or competitive.
So for the more detailed job description. City recorder slash manager, department administration, report to mayor and city council. Pay range sixty to seventy, DOE. FLSA salary exempt. Compensatory time off. State of Oregon hers. Benefits, health, dental, life insurance, vacation, sick leave. Work schedule expectations in the office, eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Essential competencies of the job are described under the headings below. They may be subject to change at any time. The omission of specific statements of duties does not exclude them from the position. If the work is similar, related, or illogical assignment to the position. This job description does not constitute an employment agreement between the employer and employee. And may be changed by the employer at any time. Any thoughts on that section before I move on? General position summary. Acts as. Acts as city reporter, manager, serves as clerk of the city council, city licensed unofficial. Elections officer, processes complaints and requests for information from the public. Does research for the mayor slash council and analyzes information. Works under the general direction of the mayor slash council and participates in the establishment. Of mayor objectives and reviews work for effectiveness and results obtained. Is there a missing word, the? For mayor on that last sentence, or is that just? Oh, major, see, that changes everything. Let me read that again then. Works under the general direction of the mayor slash council or participates in the establishment of major objectives. And reviews work for effectiveness and results obtained. Also, before I move on. Right? Essential functions. Unless specifically identified as a non-essential job function, information. Included in this job description and any reference supplemental documents is considered an essential job function. Temporary modifications to provide reasonable accommodations. Or transitional work assignments do not waive any of the essential functions of this position. Falling in, information is not all inclusive. Prepared budget. Exercise supervision of office employees, public works, and wastewater superintendent. Responsible for applying sound supervisory and personnel principles per state law and city employment. Manages department resources, including budget, materials, and equipment for maximum efficiency while being fiscally responsible. Ensures that employees are adequately trained and cross-trained where applicable. Assist the mayor and council in formulating policies and procedures for departmental organization and operation management team. Maintains communication and coordination with the mayor, council, and other agencies, coworkers, and the public. Works with all departments to ensure proper preparation of council, planning, commission, and budget committee agendas. Makes make necessary legal notifications of all meetings. Special meetings and public hearings of the city council and committees. Acts as clerk of the council, planning commission and budget committee, parlementarian, and ensures. Clients with public meeting laws. Reports council meetings, drafts or edits minutes, and submits for council approval. Maintains custody of official. Uh, official council minutes and answers inquiries regarding council activities. Acts as. Records manager in charge of city records. Management and retention program maintains all official records of the city, certified slash attest to all legal documents of the city. Attends all council planning. Attends all council and planning commission meetings. Anybody else want to take from there?
Knowledge and skill. Thorough knowledge of the organization and functions of city government and municipal administration, state and local law, rules and regulations pertaining to council proceeding. State public records and meetings laws and parliamentary procedures. Skills and ability to perform research, compile and analyze data, and write clear and accurate reports on complex subjects. Acts as a licensing officer in regards to business registration, liquor license applications, city airport leases, marijuana dispensary licenses. Franchises and all other regulated businesses and processes, certain land use matters such as annexations and street vacations. Processes comma, certain land use matters. No, no comma? Okay. There should be, okay. Acts as an elections officer responsible for all aspects of local elections. Acts as a public information officer responsible for responding to requests for public records and information and ensuring compliance with related laws. Responsible for management and enforcing of municipal code and city ordinances and resolutions. Including drafting and maintaining ordinances and resolutions adopted by council. Perform other duties as required by state statute and municipal code. Acts as a contract manager to ensure compliance with public contracting laws and standard city contract lease provisions. And oversees preparation, advertisement, and receipt of all bids, proposals, and related notices. Considerable knowledge of state and federal privacy and security laws related to public records. Thorough knowledge of the principles and techniques of supervision. Skills in analyzing and resolving problems in a logical and effective manner. Understanding of form of the city government and chain of command. Knowledge of quick votes and basic computers. Any questions? Abilities, oh, can I have the word?
Write and administer. That would be apply for and administer.
Some knowledge and skill.
Writing and administer.
Collaborating with other local and state agencies.
On that note, and and maybe this doesn't, maybe this doesn't fill your concern. Under essential functions on the second page. About halfway down, maintains communications and coordination with the mayor, council, other agencies, coworkers, and public. Okay. Sure, sure. I'm not opposed to making it more clear.
We're not collaborating positively.
Maintain an unpositive relationship with with other local agencies.
Maybe we should just write in the script.
Positive or professional or something.
That's an essential function in my mind.
I like that, under essential functions. Positive relationship with other local and state agencies. Ability to work in a fast-paced office environment with interruptions. Ability to accept supervision and criticism. Ability to review substantial data, draw conclusions, and implement when required. Ability to communicate well with others and produce written reports. Ability to make sound decisions, ability to move between city work locations. Ability, ability to learn, ability to read and comprehend complex. Ability to read and comprehend complex legal and regulatory information laws and ordinance. Involved work standards, regular attendance and punctuality, speaking truthfully at all times. Conduct oneself in integrity, integrity, morality, character, and trustworthiness. Would it be morality comma character? Yeah. Or. Yeah. Conduct oneself with integrity, morality, and trustworthiness. Ability to work independently and make decisions in accordance with established policies and procedures. Ability to communicate effectively both orderly and in writing. Ability to secure cooperation of others in difficult work situations. Ability to deal with in wide variety of complex issues. Perform other stress and multitasking prioritized workload. Ability to prepare a budget. Be fiscally responsible and monitor expenditures. Ability to manage important complex records. Ability to deal with the public and city officials with advocacy and tax. Ability to function as an integral part of the city administrative and management team. Accept supervision and construct a criticism. Calmly and effectively criticize if stressed situation. Exhibit self-control, be reliable, responsible, and dependable. Be detail oriented, willingness to take on responsibilities and challenges. Potential to detail when completing tasks. City website maintenance. Keeping the information current by making revisions, additions, and deletions. Ensuring posting including, but not limited to, minutes, agendas, meeting packets, video of meetings. Ordinances, code of ordinance, for ordinances, resolutions, city charter, council rules, and various city forms. You know that section?
Yeah, go ahead.
We did discuss some summary redundancy in this and. And it was kind of doubling down on some of those more important points.
And that's kind of what I was gonna say to summary redundancy, especially. The word criticism is kind of a, doesn't fit well with people. You could maybe. Accept supervision and and. And construct a feedback or, you know. It just, when you see it twice and if someone's reading through this and sneaking the word criticism twice and what's on each page, it's gonna. Might might. Set a tone for. Are they a very critical bunch?
So maybe we suggest changing that to just feedback.
What constructive?
Good, but.
Because you, I mean, it's like coming back to be have problems with pointing out. Error as a courtesy so that it doesn't have to be talked about later. And then taking offense to it. So you have to have very constructive feedback.
I like.
Constructive. It's not to do it in a sense to the criticism more deeper.
Alright, education, certification, and experience. Education and experience requirements listed are minimum standards. Other equivalent combinations of education, certification, training, and experience may be considered. Education, bachelor's degree in public administration is preferred with three years' experience in municipal administration. In lieu of a bachelor degree in associate's degree or an MMC or CMC certification from the International Institute Municipal Clerks. For the ability to obtain CMC within one year. With the combination of at least five years' work experience municipal administration of the clerk. Or city reporter may be considered.
Well, I'd like to share here. Since we had that meeting, I got some feedback and had, you know, rethought my. On this, I feel like the. Ability to obtain a CMC within one year. Should be changed to two years, and I'll explain why. And then the combination of at least five years' work experience in municipal administration as a clerk or reporter may be considered. I think we should potentially open up that. That a little bit. And with the idea being that it takes at least two years. To go through the process with the person. With the Institute of Municipal Clerks. If we. Hire someone who's already one year into the process. In my mind, they're already. In that stepping stone. My fear is they're gonna come here, spend a year, get this thing, and bounce. Uh, where I feel like if we train somebody from to get good, they might be more likely to stick with us. For a little longer, and God knows we need consistency. And then the idea of it took behind loosening up the five years as a clerk or reporter. Is that there may very well be candidates who possess a set of skills that will fill our needs. That are not traditional candidates for this type of position. And given the fact that we have a small budget. And a pretty dirty track record at this moment. I feel like we should try to expand our. Should try to expand our our pool of potential applicants as far as we can without cutting ourselves. So. I would like to see us have a discussion a little bit about that, if others agree.
I agree.
I'm suggesting that the one year be changed to two years. And then. Combination of at least five years' work experience in municipal administration as a clerk or city recorder. I don't have text in my head, but I I think if we took a moment here, we could probably. Come up with something.
I think it should be less, as you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I I think, but you know, someone, again, there may be a pool of some pool of candidates who don't have haven't worked in a city hall, for instance, for the last five years. But have been doing some sort of administrative work for another company or another business, you know what I mean, that can bring those to us and be very helpful. So maybe. Five years or experience. And adminis- just in administration or management of a business, or again, I'm not exactly sure how we want worded.
Related fields.
It's. Two, maybe three years. And part of getting that certificate there. Means you have to have worked so many years and as a clerk or city recorder, it comes for that. So if you don't have that. We've had people coming in with, and our problem has been, if you look at this people. That they don't have actual hands-on city business, municipality work. So they don't know ordinances, they don't know resolutions, they can't do agendas. And that's where our problem is. And. My concern is if we'd say, we're gonna hire you. But you have to get your CMC within two years. They, that may not even be on their radar, they may not have even started the program. And their minds may not afford any opportunity to do it with family, kids, employment. They may not be able to do it, so I would like to see us get somebody that is in the program or at least started the program. We could basically, I'm, you know, happy you're into it and I'm working hard, then we can, when you hire them, talk to them about it and extend it. But if you say you get the job and you get the certificate in two years. They physically can't do it because of their home life, their working life, whatever. So I don't want, I would prefer not to say two years because. Did all of us here know what CMC was prior to looking into it? I mean, no, so. You would have to. I wanted to see somebody starting the program, it's so weird what it is, looking into it. And then not requiring it of them, they're already in the program, that means. And I think it's important in the combination because. Like you said, we had issues with doing agendas, we had issues with doing resolutions, ordinance. And if you don't work in this or in another field, you don't know what it is. Concerned. One. Someone. administrative business background. It's not as much of an overlap. Who's an administrator, corporate setting. Fill that position. That. Came from. Those dissimilar backgrounds and in some areas they were very strong, but they were big points.
I certainly respect everyone's opinion, I'm not, I was just. I just realized we're we're challenged at the number of applicants who who will see us as as even an option. And the more narrow we bring it, the the harder it's gonna be for us to find applicant, quality applicants. So if if the rest of the council doesn't, isn't as concerned as I was, I'm happy to. Leave it that way.
No, that is a concern. And for people that have the relevant experience. Our our salary offering really isn't competitive. Something you can do about.
Sure. Wait, what?
I was just gonna say. I agree with. It needs to be a municipal administration, but I know this has been a hot button topic, but I had a really interesting conversation with um. Uh. Curtis about the recorder versus manager argument that it's been playing the city for a long time. And it kind of shifted my perspective on it. Um, as he was saying. Um, for someone who's worked at a big city. The job here is not as big as one would think it is, when you're supervising fire, police. Um, you are just managing department heads as that. City manager, that's what a city manager does, and then coming here. You have, you know, wastewater and pretty much that's, that's it. Um, so. It really is a lot smaller job when I was thinking. You're wearing more hats, but I guess in the perspective of the job field, he really not. Also, he was explaining the um. The. Just based on the stigma that we've had here with city managers. Hiring a city manager is setting that person up to already be a target for the public, just because. It the manager portion of it, so. I. Also, we are driving the bottom of the barrel for city managers. With the salary range. So it shifted my perspective and I. Like with that being said in our conversation, I would like to see the manager portion taken out. But that's just. I'm, I am so happy.
For a. Or a series, what the average salary is for a city recorder. We're we're at top of the, it's the cream of the crop. And you've opened up the full mouth of people who have five years' experience, they're starting the program. They could apply for this, and like I said, if you look at the CMC training with Omar. I, let me tell you, I would have thirty-five years with the state and there's a lot of things in there that I could find. So I I'm real interested.
Yeah.
You said that. To even qualify for the training, they have to have had. Some previous experience, how how much?
Uh, it's it's.
Typically, what?
It's five years or something like that.
Before they can even enroll in the program. And which is a two-year program.
Yes.
You know, I'm I'm talking about previous to the two-year, they have to, they have to have so much time of all points. Before they can enroll in this.
No.
I misunderstood.
My understanding is you had to have some X amount of points over the 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 two-year program. But if you come into the job, let's say, three years of experience, they'll give you some of those points from day one.
That's that's kind of what I was getting after was a cumulative with the program and prior experience instead of. The the two-year program plus five years' experience, then you're looking at, you know.
And then, and you know. I talked to the president of Omar and then the treasurer of Omar different times, they said like, that would be something that. He would want to pay to encourage it and as money well spent, the eighty-dollar Omar, the fees for it. But um. And they would need time off and so that would all be, you know. For training and stuff like that, they they give it in their network. You know, one one time when I was talking to her, she was doing an email out, asking, and she instantly had responded, she emailed me back, because it's a network.
I'm sorry, the listener thing, yeah, yeah, okay, I appreciate all the input, let's just. We still have a lot to cover in this meeting, so. Um. I guess are we just leaving that education portion? Um, what's every consensus on those thoughts?
I think changing it to two years. Works. Okay. You know, I'm like two years.
I don't, because because of the reason is if you say, like it says, I'm going to, I'll say one more time is. If you say I like this candidate, but I say Sharon, I mean, she named example Sharon. She's, I said, you, are you coming with Omar, and she goes, no, I insist, but you have to get a certificate in two years. And she's. I mean, I don't, my family might not allow me, I'm giving up, but you know. But now you have them rule her out, she can't get it.
Okay, well, what if they can't get it within one?
That's crazy, we're giving them a multi.
Yeah, but at least they're in the program and then we could. Extend it, because like when COVID, um, it's. But the president of Omar says that if a woman takes two years. It's not exceeding.
I have one question, when you're, if you are going to do the education part like that, or you're willing to not, they won't be here forty hours. If you're doing that too, so it's just. That's been a problem, whether people complaining that they're never at work, but if they're doing their classes or they're doing the app have. You have to allow time for them to um, to get these things and. Well, we. Yeah, but even on weekends, they can't, they can't, they have to be a. Um. If they're gonna work, okay, I'll work on, I'll work Saturday, but then I want Friday off, and you know what we get?
We we discussed that whole idea in in our meeting, and that's where the idea. Then, the, I think we really expect to have someone in here forty hours a week, and then if there are. Things above and beyond that forty hours, that's where we can. Add that compensatory time off. To make up for that. The idea that I, I did this extra thing last week and I'm gonna take a day off this week, to me is not acceptable.
Okay. Um. Sounds like maybe we're just gonna leave it. Yes? That's one year? Three to five years' experience as a city reporter, deputy city reporter in government based upon education, expert. Certification? Okay, based on education or certificate. Confidence in all areas of secretarial work, processes and skill. Any satisfactory combination of experience and training which ensures the ability to perform the work may be substituted, may substitute below. Working conditions. While performing the duties of this job, the work is primarily performed indoors in an office setting with a noise level that is usually quiet. At times work maybe you perform to outside with noise and weather conditions that may vary. This job may require vending, hearing voices, hearing voices. Hearing voices, telephone conversations, seeing, keyboarding, sitting and standing for extended periods of time. May be required to perform a full range of motion with lifting and or carrying supplies, materials, equipment and or items weighing up to twenty-five pounds. In emergency situations who may have to work long hours. Factors described herein are representative of, but not. All inclusive of those that must be met in individuals successfully perform the duties as a city reporter manager. I have a question, does it say anywhere, oh, okay. Yeah, something worth.
It's this three to five years experience. It's kind of weird, it's like, wants somebody in this. At least three and over.
That's a free job.
Three or more?
Three or more. Three to five years experience. Based upon education. Three years, you only think five, so that's. The. I thought it was kind of inconsistent. But the bachelor's degree is for three years, the CMC is with five years. So if you say three years down here and then we're. But that's three to five years based upon the education or certificate. Yeah, but your education, you're stating the bachelor's. I I mean, I'll change it whenever, but that was my thought. So what should it be? I I think minimum of three years.
I think that's unacceptable investment.
Yeah. Are you leaving it as recorder slash manager?
That's all.
Uh, I agree, I mean, I sat in that meeting with you and 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 I've always kind of thought. You know, call it what you want, it's really that's the job you. It does, it does uh. Make a difference if you're, when you're trying to recruit. But manager versus reporter, I I I I think we could. Recruit for a city reporter.
Uh, when I searched on chat G P T, the average salary for a recorder in Oregon. Um, it says ranges from forty-two thousand in smaller cities to a hundred thousand and larger. Um. Typically, they make between forty-five and sixty.
So sixty or seventy would be.
Something really can look like, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can change that, you could go fifty to sixty. Right, based upon our budget, I mean, we could save there as well.
I too, and had several conversations with Council Armstrong and others in the community, and I think at this point I would be okay. And ensure reporter as well.
I'm not. Very wide, you know, I have a pleasure to report, we need people applying to give it reporting. Any kind of man, whatever, so I think that limits. And. I know our city charter serves the government city reporter, but it didn't, yeah. Or say that, somebody got that into the, it was supposed to be. Say, was the council gonna do that, or are we gonna do that? Um. You know, all this data and this stuff for the manager, more like now, this is where.
I know, I always thought it was, tomato, tomato, it's still the same job, no matter what you call it.
Well, no, I'm just saying what they're doing here day to day is the same thing, whether you call it.
No, I'm tired of the, the city, the government city manager does, whatever their title is. It's still more than a city recorder is required to do by the, you know, and so that's where. I always have a hey, that is that. We would get someone underqualified, we just put in a recorder. But.
Hopefully making the world. After picture of what you're asking me to do, and not, and not asking me, you bought more.
But we do have those at higher salary than a typical forty-five thousand, you know, we do have a good attract. Yeah.
And that's part of the reason we did this profile, let's write that right from the get-go, they understand that it's more. A whole simple recording.
And the other thing. Have people really, for use. For me. Absolutely, well, I don't.
I think a good case by case basis, and when we do interview people or talk to someone initially left them know that. This isn't your typical city reporter position, it just entails a little bit more. But, but we. A lot of people don't really have a task, don't really. But. I'm not even relevant experience. Um. I I don't see any of that. Yeah, so you want to remove the bachelor's degree and put in.
Just give the. Always. Everyone's.
Anybody that's experienced, yeah, several years, you know, I don't worry, I I think experience is more important in a degree if they're doing everything.
I agree, I agree.
Don't change that day. And you want to keep them at minimum of three years or?
And you want to keep them at minimum of three years or? And take away all the managers, yeah. We could take a consensus vote. Um, you can either leave it recorder slash manager or just be recorder, so all those in favor of recorder slash manager, raise your hand. And all those in favor are just recorder, raise your hand. All those not participating in the vote, use your hand.
We still need to try to track this. Qualified again is possible, and if that's within our budget, really up.
Great, thank you guys so much, we didn't know that, but we really, really appreciate it, the next steps um would be publicating these things. On the city website, um. Kind of opening up the application on something else, it's a kind of the intention. We're gonna remove the other stuff and put this up. This, this confirmed their meeting last week.
Thank, I guess the question to the council from the committee is. You know, according to list, where we'd like to see that advertised, uh, we have many.
Playing a regular spot, yeah, I really don't like what you mean. It's been viewed, it's just, it's never. For them to be, no, but I mean, if we do do, there's different levels to post here on the deed, but. Uh, Krista had it set out was like the most expensive one. So we can do, we put a budget, we could do six dollars a day or something for a week. Or whatever, and it can run, it's just not gonna get as much attention, but um it was like at sixty dollars a day.
The full council trust that the committee can develop.
Can we do a, oh, sorry. And a bridge. Notice, you know, like bullet points or something. Or, because this many, they're usually charged by the word or.
We talked about that in the meeting too, and we figured if they charge by the word, maybe they're not for us.
I mean, sometimes, some places, you know. Or the column, column inches and different things like that.
Well, we just be within reason, I, I trust. Already we just will do this, what we post out there on all those places, send them to the website for the document. This one, one.
Maybe not that long. People lose interest quickly.
Yeah, this in a different format is, is fairly short.
Yeah, I just, I, I did this.
I mean, it's, it's less than a page, you can take away the photos and you're ready with it.
I mean, it's.
I believe it's free, go for it.
And you, and we could put one in, like, serotonin.
Alan, if you ask me about it, when you ready, I can get you that, pretty, pretty readily.
Well, that was productive, let's move on to item number ten, review. You, I would, if there was discussion, I think it could be like thirty days out. And then we review the applicants and then you just keep it going out, now someone in need to do the life. When you just gateways, but on the front, you have a limited applicant, you need to do something now, then to pick it out, and if there's no one there, you just. Going, is that okay?
Open till filled too.
Question of when the first. And there's some minimum time, you know, I say, put it out for two weeks. Starts by, and then we'll be reviewing two weeks after that. During our meeting, we kind of discussed six weeks that allows for that, and that's where, and it's got a, I think we're between. Four and six weeks.
From my reading, yeah, thirty days from there, when we posted, so you're hoping to fill the first review would be pretty good. And something else the committee talked about, and I think this is important is. The office staff needs help, so we um talked about it, you're doing this until we get a really good candidate, don't panic, do something. I know that we've had Kurt helping and there's been volunteers, but. He was saying that, if she continues being.
If I were to continue being the interim or pro temp or whatever, and then we do need somebody else to, in the other chair. Um, because there um are things that are coming up that aren't ordinary. Um, that, um, we're getting emails from, we have some. State, uh, the ethics committee contacted me and they needed some information. We have the E permitting that needs. Some information, all of these different things, these don't, these don't happen every single day, but right now, everybody's coming. At the city with these special programs or whatever that they need. Um, answers from us for, so I need somebody to do, um, to help.
So as a committee, I think we agreed to ask the council. To approve a, I think very higher to provide another body in the office up until time that we. Can find a permanent person, if not, we're gonna be two, two legs, that's three legs still in, still in.
I agree, and both of them go to. Atlas or one of the companies that we see about, you know. Who have worked here before and come back, and this would be an emergency, no benefits, and it would be, no, but I have paid that. Business to try and find somebody, so then there would be no benefits of help for her. Because it's a temporary, and this is an emergency, so we don't have.
So what you're asking is that we look at the four previous employees before we start. That's reaching.
Yes, because I believe you're sharing, need somebody that's trained and help walk in and start doing things, not training that for sure. Think whoever will apply and help, and Sharon feels qualified. Best, Sharon will hire the best person that.
As honestly, as long as same.
Hourly, twenty dollars an hour of the previous city clerk.
I think so, or she might have been nineteen, nineteen. Well, because what goes to the employment agency and why we pay more to the employment agency is because of the tax.
Yeah.
And, and. Yeah, they're not our employee. Right. I'm gonna have to double check on that one.
It may not have been awesome, the full former employees, it's fair. Chances are, we're gonna be reaching it to.
Regardless, you're saving money on that maintenance management currently, so you know. Need a little room, um, to find someone, you know.
And we need that person to be full-time or, yeah, just one.
So we need to make a motion, or we just offer a stuff. Sharon, as our interim or pro temp city reporter to reach out and. Find some maybe help, or in the office full-time, nineteen dollars an hour. Alright.
And we need to be clear with that person is.
Uh, a motion has been made by Council Armstrong to authorize uh our city manager pro temp to hire. A temporary um. City clerk. Would that be the technical decision?
Yes.
Um. Assistant to office and council planner has second, same exception.
I just want, is it okay that it's not an agenda item to do that, to make a decision?
Yeah, presentation on meeting findings, because it's a recommendation for the committee. We'll move into a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
The post. Great, motion passes. Alright, we're gonna move into item number ten, review existing contracts. Um, I put this on the agenda because as we were going over the budget. Um, it's very bleak, and we're spending a lot of money on things that we don't. Need to, I think moving forward, these annual contracts, Council Armstrong had a good idea. We make a, a list of these annual contracts that we're doing, and every year we review them and see if they're still relevant. So, um, A and B are our annual contracts. Um, C was put on the agenda because that is part of the Arva contracts that have not been done yet. So I wanted uh to put them up for council discussion, I will be abstaining from item number C, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys backstory of why that was. So, um, item number A, clear cut landscape. We are paying six hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for that, I think we need to cancel that. See any difference.
Yeah, there's a, the, the second part of this, I spent a good amount of time at Old Beach between fishing and walking my dog. Don't see this work happening currently. Uh, and I also believe that with a little bit of effort, we can, that's community, get that grass mowed and support a lot of the spread and things. At much less cost. So I, 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 I would support canceling this contract.
Just as approved by city council in twenty twenty-three, so I'm pretty sure we can cancel it at any time, there's no language in there that says it. And I have a motion, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that. This council cancels contract, clean cut landscape and maintenance.
Second, alright, a motion's been made by Council Hand to cancel the contract with clean cut landscape maintenance and seconded by Council Harden. Is there any more discussion? No, that's, you're looking at the next one, yeah, the first one is the clean. Alright. Alright, we'll look into a vote, all of them favor canceling contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Post, alright, motion carries. You want? Need to reach out to them and cancel it, or do you have time, Sharon?
Um, that's either way, and do it as of, um, June first, as of July first, uh, some immediate. Okay.
Alright, we'll move into item, um. And B, careless property service, this is the mowing on, of the airport. Um, pay nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars a year. To hot dot mode, and personally, I live by the airport, and I don't. It's done as much as it should be, but this is a lot of money that we're putting out that we could be saving. We were talking about this, I think you calculated it, council. It's long ago.
I, I think the biggest issue is. Said the, the, doesn't have the right tires on the tractor to mow, and to get rid of the, the grass, it has to be, it has to be. Removed, and just cut it, leave it laid, so that, that's. It sounds to me like that's the biggest issue, so I don't know if anybody's talked to, buddy or business about it or.
And, and I know that when they first did this contract, um. I think through the minutes, and Rich, Rich is not who it was. He actually went on record as saying that they have been mowing it and they continued to mow it, and it was not a name. And it was Melissa who says, no, we need absolutely do it, so they have said there's plenty of time to do it, and they were capable, and have been doing it. I forgot, said it takes like two days or something.
Yeah, Rick.
I mean, only twenty-three dollars an hour, I might completely guess, no, that's kind of what I remember.
I remember the, the cost was probably close to thing, yeah, it may, may have been just a little bit more, seem like I came up with like ten thousand. But.
The way I'm calculating is, I'd be in that May to September time period, weekly mowing, twenty weeks. In uh, October, April is another fourteen weeks. I don't believe that has been moved thirty-four times in the last year. Okay, so right off of that, that's a huge red flag to me. We're gonna be doing it over the second.
I agree, I, I went as far as took the. Utility, public utility guy, for a ride down the runway, I did, and. Because I'd talked to some pilots and they said, they, this is what happens, this is how they, how fast they have to go, so we drove in there like an airplane. I didn't think it was that bad.
Was it fun?
Also, I want to discuss making the airport a drag strip. Yeah, but uh, do I have a motion to?
I move that we cancel this contract with careless property services for the mowing of the airport property. Effective, the, the beginning of June.
Alright, a motion's been made by Council Hand to cancel the mowing contract effective June first, and seconded by Council Planner, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Quick master, a hundred and ninety dollars a week for the charge. It takes two days to do that fifteen hours labor, you're effectively paying a twelve bucks an hour. That's, I don't think.
No, but he doesn't mow it every.
He doesn't mow it the thirty-four times a year that he claims he does.
Maybe that's.
That, that, that's the big issue.
Weekly and bi-weekly.
It really just only needs to be mowed as needed.
Be mowed every three weeks, maybe.
And as needed as per Public Works, not as needed as for airport. So I'd imagine that Public Works has a much lower standard than the guy learning his airplane.
I mean, if it's gonna be an issue, we can always go out and get this, get it. Alright. I don't intend to see, I do a couple of conditions, I would be abstaining from this conversation, so I'll.
Can you give a little backstory?
So the reasons of the contract has been put on the agenda is because during our initial search for clothes for Arba funds, we need to spend the money for their Arba and then on when we actually got my portal and hit submit, we didn't need to be spending all that money, so this is one of the contracts that has not been fulfilled or had been done or started, no pay has been sent out, so it just needs to come before council again to see if they want to continue or what they want to do with the contract, so.
So let's help explain it, pardon you guys.
Um, see, I think it's important to keep it because for, for several reasons, you know, we currently are looking at returning fifty-two thousand dollars in Arba funds that was listed in general services wages. And they kicked out a lot of them, so we may end up returning fifty-two thousand dollars. And we have entered it into the portfolio, saying general services wages. If two years from now they come and audit us and say, you guys didn't fall underneath the guidelines and stuff, we have these nice projects that come up, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars, sixty-three cents. This is included and the building needs to be done. I think this is a very gracious offer by in Armstrong Construction to fix our windows. It was there in the library section, they have paint on the window that was a crap.
I think we're all aware of the condition.
We can go under capital outlay and maintenance, the coffee can be maintained, so there's a place that was meant to be without it. So if he's willing to continue, I think we need to do it. And then we just spent the money, so down the line, yeah, they come back and say general services doesn't cut it like it isn't currently. We're gonna end up returning it, we should end up returning more money. So I think we need to spend this money, something to have it under maintenance and a capital outlay and have them in those time.
And what she, oh, I'm, hey, I'm what Elaine is really saying, the fifty-one thousand is from the CARES Act, that's like completely different than the Arba. And so that, what's not this, it doesn't have anything to do with them, what, what you're saying is that you know, we've obligated three hundred ninety-nine thousand to general services, if they come back and they kick out one of the things that we've added to general services, we would have this contract to put in its place because it's been signed and it's all, it, it's. I had that, I think that's what she's explaining.
Really quick, it has nothing to do with the contract, just the clarification of the Arba funds.
Right.
Be able to approve wages and that's an acceptable use of the money from the, from left or right way. I mean, we will, I mean, twenty-six thousand dollars in wages is nothing, so just in, in scheme of Arba funds. That's not, in, in my mind.
Right, but that's what, what we, um, and counselor Armstrong is saying.
Yes.
And it's not to, it's not, I'm, because I'm neither, I'm neither here nor there, so.
Maybe the coffee, if they start falling out, there's an inch gap in some of the doors. I think because we got this and we couldn't get anybody else. I, I, I think that we should consider proceeding, this is the last of the obligated. And I think our building needs it.
I wish our budget officer was here.
She, she is the one that. I can call her. She said Sharon, she gave Sharon anything that said where the money would come. The maintenance, you know, the, of the maintenance for the parking, the capital outlay for the windows.
And it's already there. It's like, and what is it, what is the budget in the amount? We take this out of it, what will, what will it's to plead that?
We're at, we have one month left. This is coming out of this.
What you, what, what is the budget in the amount? And under the line I didn't just speaking about, capital, what, what was it? Outlay and maintenance?
That, I do not know. I walked over to her place at one o'clock and says, are you absolutely sure we have this money?
I don't know what, um, maybe not, no. Then Rob has our counselor ward.
I understand.
That's why I was seeking to end with, but she is figuring all of these obligated funds to come out except for the room and the IT thing and the generator.
The generator's not coming from the general.
No, it's coming out, but it's O G. That I'm talking about the obligated Arba funds, she has to, you know.
I think it's important to know, know that number that this is coming from, but if that number's twenty.
We need to know what is the yeah, it'd have to be a budget to actual to see, because you were, you wanted it to come out of the general fund or where was the contingency, the general fund contingency, the what, whose contingency, which fund?
Do you want to have a copy of the latest actuals?
I can see if Michelle has one, but that's what it would be, right? Because e- each fund has a contingency fund, correct? Okay, so we have to know what fund she's talking about, that which contingency fund out of which fund? I don't know if.
We need, what?
Probably from Michelle.
Ten, ten minutes or five minutes or something?
Um, yeah, I'll see if she can even do it. Um, we had, the last one we had was in our packet, it was small, but we haven't, it wasn't a budget actual.
This time critical.
If I, I'm busy, but I put you guys out starting eight at May, we can put it out. Yeah, we'll do soon. It's up to you guys, the money's there.
I think it's important to find out if what the numbers are.
If, if we can get an answer and shortly, we can make an important decision, if we can't get an answer in a time when matter time critical, this one we can put this decision off.
It's not time critical, I mean, so.
So maybe we if we can't get an answer.
She, um, Michelle said it would take a, a quite a while for to be able to get, because she, and she's not even really sure of the funds yet. She was waiting to work with Kurt tomorrow. To get the, because he's gonna come in, he. He's bringing paperwork in, so he's been working on the budget to actuals and stuff at home. For us.
You guys figure out the money.
We can always cancel it.
Well, there's no, then we could just put it next month, yeah, or or just move it. Where's the roof coming from? Oh.
But it ends up being your back three zero, so you did not carry the meaning over to anybody. That answers the question, thank you.
I, I still think that since it's not a huge time pressure, if we could put this, next meeting, we could get those in front of us, those numbers all laid out in front of us instead, so. That's my opinion.
When I'm starting to make, but.
It was right up the new, since you probably were having a new contract and starting. And then just so y'all know, I went ahead, you know, we didn't need to do it, went ahead and got a another bond, got my other bond covered it after we got the bond, but here's the second bond for commercial. That's a date which I didn't need after we went across space, we didn't have commercial bond and me and the wife, everything. Like we didn't need the bond covers everything, I've been paid for that bond, so never happen.
Alright, something consensus.
Yeah, we'll get the numbers in front of us. It was fun and, you know. Look at them next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we'll move into the announcements then, um. I did want to say, just for the next meeting, we were gonna put the eight street property kind of like a final decision on this meeting, but um, it's not really a meeting that now is stuff to talk about, so I'm gonna be moving that to the next regular meeting. Um, we will be discussing the Rainbow Road property next meeting. Um, that sale is following through.
Oh, no.
And the approval of four hundred dollars to post construction or, you know, that's a request. So that will be on the next agenda, uh, the next agenda meeting. Yeah, four hundred percent final request. We don't have any budget meetings before our next regular meeting, so we don't have to do that. That's it for announcements, you have anything, Sharon?
Um, since we were talking about those those, um, for the next regular meeting, I probably have to bring up the contracts for LCOG for legal. And, because we have legal and we have planning. So we have to figure out what we're gonna be doing, because this year we went over I just found out that there was two contracts, but they're not even sure if there is two contracts. Because July of every year, we usually sign, or historically, the city has signed a, a contract with LCOG for ten thousand dollars. And that's for the legal for the year. And then, but now I'm not sure how they started doing the, the planning portion of, because the billing, if it was actually something that was approved through city council, that there's, they are now the planners or the planner on, of record. So we kind of have to discuss that, I think. Or if you guys have discussed it, because I wasn't here, but to that, how we got LCOG to be our planner.
Um, I don't think it's for discussion.
Okay.
For the next meeting, so we don't get too into depth without.
Yeah. Right.
Um, also, I probably not, on this meeting or next meeting, uh, there'll be a proposition for LGPS doing HR on case by case base, like to avoid any sort of employment suits and just to, uh, give some sort of HR structure. So that will be, um, after presentation at some point, oh, the nineteenth, um. This, oh, he didn't come today, did he? The IT guy?
No.
So, never mind, but he's coming soon to, um, do some things for the city and I, I want him to talk to all of us. I've talked to him before on what he's done and what he's doing, that's a lot of IT things that, um, library didn't quite absorb with this, this terminology, so it'd be nice if he can the last one, what he's doing, I, he is doing stuff, but so it's just low and then with the loss of the city manager, I had to try to like relay information and he's asking me for authorization for getting the what, you know, and so it's just getting really confusing, so, um, we will have an update on that, hopefully. I'm not gonna keep this here any longer, so we may hear your comments. Our contract, the big sign said that if, if all of you were something, you can also get the lead back on, definitely do that right away. Uh, I mean, if that's what the contract said, and it doesn't need council authorization.
I'll find it, I'll find the.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think you need to just
Yeah.
About it in the meeting, I just. Um, there was, I mean, not to get too in depth, there was also another meeting, but it's almost impossible that. So, um, I don't think it's going anywhere anytime soon. Um, right, also, really?
I'll comment.
I'm gonna comment, just to say thanks to the council for continually supporting these events in the community.
Yeah, I really want to thank the hiring committee for doing all that work and I'm excited about our new job description and hosting and move forward on that, so. My, I think, when, when you do the groundbreaking. You know. I'm just excited for this.
Yeah.
Boy, I mean, I was gonna sit and run announcements.
Oh.
I don't know whether anybody in government, as you can notice. For about the last month, it's been sporadic. And I worked with the technicians at the sign company, we turned water in and the part was getting around about seventeen hundred dollars. And last time I happened was several years ago, I was apparently self, I don't know where I can do that. Not able to do that. Not able to do that, I can't find anybody reporting on Seattle, leaving me in the midst of being able to work.
I don't. I wonder if.
If you had a man on.
The the, uh, it's all in tears. That would feel like. Well.
So.
But I don't know if the letter didn't sign open without all of our competitors all got something. Uh, I think I'm, I have a lot of insurance, let's say about that. Uh, it's just in progress.
If we end up with a new part, I used to be a electronics technician and I feel like I can unplug, it's twenty, it goes back in.
It's, it's, it's no box and it's got about twenty connections that just plug into it. It only holds up, push the box, let it back down.
We have a scissor lift. Carl to use instead of what.
I don't know this. Um. I was just on a social step where it was fine.
We could get, yeah, I think if we could find somebody go ladder for you, you know, well, you guys, if you don't know, if you had the brain.
Yeah.
Let you be able to.
Yeah.
We could, but, but that's a budget item.
Well, also, uh, has anyone seen the sign on the airport road calling apart too?
No, there is significant interest from the business community to cover the cost of replacing that. One of the problems is we have, we don't know exactly what size it is, there'll be quotes. We mentioned you found.
I, I emailed you.
Okay.
What I found. I, cause I found the origin, it didn't have the sizes, but it has the name of who would um, who did it.
Also, we be calling.
And yes, and there's the file number and all that was on that.
See if I can find that.
I think I did it from maybe from the manager. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then, the idea from the business community is that they would replace the sign, obviously it would be, the council would approve what goes up there and they would just ask there's room underneath the sign, maybe we can start promoting our book, this, from the old underneath it.
Something to present to council. I don't think that sign will need to be addressed you know, for the next winter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Last time this happened, there wasn't one.
And that's all, then I will adjourn this meeting at four.
For, I don't need.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. That was a good meeting.
Yes.
All right.
No. I just forwarded you.